All right, thank you. Tonight, this part of the budget, I don't think we'll have to be here for too long, partly because we're waiting for numbers, but we thought it was an opportune time tonight because we've received information on the medical plan. I think it's good news. And so I've asked Sean to come and talk about our proposed and recommended medical plan renewal options and requests, suggestions. And so she's going to walk you through that. You should have a bundle of information because this is going to be a little bit different, what we're recommending as far as an entity that we're going through with this Triple I A. So we'll get to that. And then after that, we're going to hit some of the, I call them the more minor funds. They're part of the general fund technically, but they're like the minor funds in the general fund. It won't take us too long to get through those. So I want to turn the time over to Sean to walk us through this.
Thank you Brett. So I'm Sean Hinder first. So you hate and give me resources. And we have been in this relentless pursuit of a better plan. You guys have all been on this ride with us. And so over the years, we've watched our benefits kind of decrease. And two years ago, we moved into the health reimbursement arrangement where we tried to buy a plan that had an outrageous deductible and then self-insure between our, the $300 deductible that we wanted and that. And it helped us save money and it helped us get some sustainability because the problem we were running into is every year we were seeing nine, 10, eight, seven increases. And it was getting to a point where we just weren't going to be able to maintain. The health reimbursement arrangement is a wonderful method to save money, but it's manual and it takes a lot of work on an employee's part to submit the paperwork to get the claims because they have to get reimbursed for expenses that they have. And so it's been something that you all have been kind enough to do, but in the same point, I know it's not the most enjoyable process for the staff. So we had an opportunity to get a bid from Triple I A. Triple I A is a trust that was created in 2011 and it's a trust, it's a combination of municipalities and it's usually smaller cities and organizations that don't have a lot of control over what they do with their benefits. So they pooled together and they created a self-funded plan and it's been going since 2011. So they're hitting their 10-year mark. There's some stability there now. They have providers up in this area that I don't believe they had early on in their plan. So it's something that we wanted to take a look at. So we had everyone complete the application and we submitted and we got the numbers back. And that's the information that you find here. So the plan that we're recommending is the Triple I A 90A and it's got the details on there, but-
It's not going to be of this. They're kind of looking, you should have-
On this sheet.
Follow her on the sheet.
Yeah, so on this sheet. So the Triple I A, it's the 90A proposal and it's a good plan. It's got a $500 deductible. It's a 90-10 coverage. It's got lower max out-of-pockets. It's got just better services for staff. And what happens is when you look at our old plan with Blue Cross, you'll see that you have the monthly cost of the plan and the renewal, but you, below that, you see additional things that I have to add into that to come up with the total cost that we pay. So when we had our Blue Cross plan up to, the current one that we're on, you had to pay for that EAP, the Inflation Assistance Program that we have with that. You also had to pay for the Health Savings Accounts that we have on the one-plan option. And then we had the health reimbursement arrangement that we had to plan for, for that self-insurance that we did between the two plans. So when you add that up, it takes those numbers up quite a bit. So Triple I A, even though the actual premiums are higher than what we saw with Blue Cross, they are actually, it costs us less money. It'll save us money in the long run because we don't have to fund an HRA. We don't have to fund an HSA. We have some savings there. So that's the recommendation. And there's more information. And again, I'll be in my office in the next week if you guys want to visit about it, you have questions about it. Triple I A also gave us an opportunity to have a second plan choice. And currently, we run right now the health reimbursement with Blue Cross. We also have a high-deductible health plan that we partner with the Health Savings Account. And the way that the rates are structured in that orange with the high-deductible health plan with Triple I A, it would allow us to offer the high-deductible health plan and fund a fairly decent Health Savings Account without costing any more than the premium would with the 90A. So we can see significant savings and still give a good benefit there. And in the long run, anyone that would take the high-deductible health plan over the 90A option would save the city money as well. So it's another way to get some savings for the city. So any questions on any of that? The one thing you do need to understand with Triple I A, there is a three-year commitment. So we have to commit to getting into the pool and staying for the three years. If we tried to withdraw within that three-year period, it's considered, it's not, it's an unauthorized withdrawal and they would charge us one-year premium basically to do that. So really, there's no, once you're in, you're in for the three years. And that's to stabilize the premium so that they make sure that they have the reserves to handle a self-funded plan, so.
So Sean, on the opposite side of that, we're committed for three years. Is their commitment for three years as well as far as prices? Or do they review it at once a year and-
So we were given our original rates and then we see every October, they renew the plan and you will see increases. If you look a little farther back in the package, probably towards the end, there is a history of their rates. And I'm not flipping right to it, of course. It's the five-year rate history. So in 2021, they had a 1% increase for the pool. So everyone in there would see a 1% increase. In 2019, they saw 2.9. In 2018, they saw 3%. In 2017, 1%. And in 2016, an actual rebate there, so.
And compare that with what we've been seeing. You know, we've been seeing 5% and above and a loss in the benefit every year. So a larger increase and a loss of benefit.
This should really give us an opportunity to stabilize our premiums. It should allow us to stabilize our plan. We're not going to see things nickel and dime away from us and take away. So it's a solid plan that really gives us what we've been working towards, I think, over the last three or four years. They also give us an option to bundle our dental with them and their vision. You'll see information on the next page about the dental. The dental rates are reasonable. We should be able to come in and get a better, or a similar benefit, maybe a little bit better depending on which plan we choose. But the middle one, the blue one, is something that we could afford at a little bit of a cost savings and it would increase the maximum payout for the benefit period by about $250. So I would say that that would be a reasonable dental plan to look at. And then as far as the vision goes, we have our vision right now through Beam. And I have it, everyone seems happy with it. It seems like it's a good plan for us. And we have a great deal with them. So I would say we will probably want to look at staying with Beam for the next year because what Triple I A would offer would be a better coverage and it really doesn't need to be changed, I don't think. Any questions? There's some information on the plans. And then again, there's a fair amount of information on Triple I A and their history and their kind of their goals. And it's a, it's a well-managed plan. It's like-minded. I mean, it's going, we're going to be in with, I think, apples in there. You can see the last page has a list of the other entities.
Northern Lakes Fire District. There's a few other entities. It's interesting and it's, it's smaller entities because the smaller ones need the pool to get the better rates, so.
Well, the problem that we had is we were, at our size, we were stuck with metallic plans. And those metallic plans don't have any, you have very limited opportunity with them. You don't have any plan designed with them. You're just, this is it, or this is it, or this is it. So it's really difficult to get what you want.
I just want to mention that Triple I A, they're usually, they have a vendor booth down at the Association of Cities Conference. And years ago, I brought back info when they were still fairly new. And, you know, at that time, they were just, I can't remember, must have been Vicki was our HR person.
Maybe, yeah.
How long have you been?
Five now, five years.
This is, so it's Triple I A has been in existence for 10 years?
10 years, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't have much interest in it when I first got here. And it's really about this year that it really started to make sense for us.
Just trampling at this, and from what you've said, it looks really good.
It should be a nice change for employees. It takes away the manual processes for the claims reimbursement. It gives them an opportunity to have a little bit better coverage. We had a 60-40 is what our co-insurance was. So when you met your deductible, then you had 40% that you were still responsible. That's still, that's still a lot of money. And so this will really help stabilize.
Explain the Blue Cross connection with this plan and how that works with Triple I A.
Blue Cross is the administr, they're the administrator. So they're a self-insured plan. They design the plan the way they want it. So they design their plans and have control over that. But then all the claims goes to Blue Cross. So you have the same providers. You have the same network. You have the, really for the staff, it won't look any differently. You'll still have a Blue Cross card. You'll still go and it'll handle things very differently. Just your costs will go down a little bit, so. Yeah.
These partnering agencies here, how many years have they been doing this, some of them?
It varies. And I don't know, they have six founding agencies that they talk about, but I wouldn't, I know like the Fire District, they've been on three years, I think, when I talked to them. And I don't know if, I don't think Athol told me how long they've been on. So I haven't done a lot of research on how long.
So they've had some experiences, this is brand new?
No.
Okay.
I think Lori is on board too.
Mm-hmm, Lori Yarber.
City Clerk here on the board, July.
Pat Riley is as well.
So while we were down there, I went to their meeting, their membership meeting at the conference and listened in on what they were doing. And it happens to be, you know, they kind of talked about a four-year cycle that they, about every four years, they'll hit a higher rate. This was the year that they saw that. But other than that, their rates have been pretty low. You know, the benefit is, you know, is a much better benefit than what we've had. And I think we've had a lot of complaints this last year about the bridging and getting the claims in and confusion on that. And so that, that'll help, this will help clean that up as well. So tonight, we're not asking for approval of this. We'll be bringing it back as part of the budget. But we want, this, we thought it was an opportune time to tell you, hey, we would like to recommend this. This looks like the direction we want to go. And then our plan would be to put these numbers into the budget for the next budget workshop so you can see how it all fits. But we, the way we have the numbers in there now, it's, we had put a 5% increase, which if you look on that front page, the Blue Cross renewal is actually less. So we'll probably see a slight decrease on the medical side in the current budget and what we have there. So I think all around, pretty good. They have some decent reserves. If you see the numbers in there, as far as they, early on, they didn't have reserves. They had some folks that got in, wanted to get out. They had some problems early on. I remember talking with Jerry and Nancy and they were not recommending it. But I think now that they've been in operation for 10 years and more stable and reserves, it seems like a decent way to go at this point, so.
So be run it by any staff at all?
Staff has some general ideas, but they have, the ones that have asked have a general sense of it and are pretty excited about an opportunity to avoid the HRA claims and all that nonsense, so.
Well, you know, Sean and I have had many discussions over our health insurance and stuff. And, you know, Blue Cross to me is very frustrating. What I'm seeing here is breath of fresh air. So, you know, kudos to you, Sean, for, you know, every year you delve into this. It can't be pleasant. And you, you know, unfortunately, you're the one that everybody takes it out on. So, you know, hang in there and you're, I think you're doing a great job by bringing this stuff to us, so. Thank you. So you want just guidance tonight?
No, actually, well, unless you have any concerns, we're going to move forward and put this in the budget, but you don't have to approve it tonight. We want to finalize everything and then we'll come back and it'll be part of the budget at later time.
So next council meeting, they have a joint powers of agreement that kind of, the fine print that I put at the bottom that talks about the three-year commitment and the different things, the joint powers agreement will come forward and you'll get to approve that. And then there's a participation agreement and Caitlin's reviewed it, so at this point.
Go ahead and have another chance.
Yeah, so we'll get those to you next, next council. And then at that point, it'll be kind of moving forward and getting ready to transition.
You know, my conversations with employees is, you know, if they don't like this, then, you know, I don't know.
We can probably help them.
They got, I mean, compared to what we currently have, they got-
This is a very nice plan.
We had that conversation with the county employees years ago when we went self-funded and they gripped about the deductible going up to $200 from 50, remember that?
Yeah.
And I stood up there and I said, okay. And then you guys are spoiled. You have no idea what it's like on the outside and working for other people that do not have insurance. And there is nothing in the rules that say we even have to provide you insurance. So if you don't like it, we'll just quit doing it right now. Do you want that? Well, they sold out the same plan too, basically.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, this is, this is exciting turnaround. And actually, if we end up with this for the next three years, Sean, we won't have to go spend a ton of time.
Yeah, we'll auto-renewal.
So Brett, are you suggesting you're going to reduce our, part time?
No.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
No, 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 me too, no.
I should ask Abby anyway.
I would table that. I would, I'd take that as a, I would consider that.
It's like, I look at around the room and everybody's like so critical to what we do. We're so tight with-
We're pretty glad they outvoted you, Rock.
Yes, yes.
We have, we have an awesome, awesome staff here. All right, let's, let's do, we'll go through some of these, I call them, again, minor, the general fund, funds. And I know that's hard to see. You have, I put it there, 90% of this. You can, I don't know if you can see that, but we'll, just follow along. You should have a copy of these funds. And I'll try and move it forward.
Is that available online?
Can you make it bigger?
Yeah. Is that available online in the agenda packet?
I can just, I can just provide it for you.
Okay.
It's sort of just the kind of the draft budget. So the boat launch fund. Again, these are separate individual funds. We'll just go through these quickly. You can see we're showing a carryover balance of $127,248. That's approximately what we have that will carry over, that we're estimating we'll have at the beginning of next year. And then we're estimating, we actually, Sandy and I sat down and we estimated that we'd get slightly lower on the boat launch amount from 40 down to 35. We just, we're trying to be conservative. And so when you put those two together, it comes up with the 162,748 as the amount that we have in revenues. We don't anticipate spending all that. And so when you go to the next page, page two of the 20, we put in some amounts, not knowing what projects we're going to have. One of the big unknowns is we're in the process of looking at the Honeysuckle Beach. And we're, there could be a project or some spending that comes out of that. And so we weren't quite sure what to do. So we put a little bit in there. We had the maintenance piece of $35,000. And the Honeysuckle Beach project, we have $24,000 in there, so.
Actually, for the whole project, we've got $60,000, but it's split between three-
Split between those, yeah.
It's split between the boat launch, the parks, impact fees, and general fund. So there's-
So there's some in other places.
The $60,000 project.
You won't see the split off until next, our next meeting for, when we look at the CIP, there's some that, we'll go to this that's split off. So this is just for this fund here.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
And Brett, this is a budget related, but was there an accident, a launching accident on Honeysuckle Beach over the weekend, or?
I don't know of a, I know that somebody that twisted their ankle is, there was an accident down there. I'm not aware of like a boat or a boat launch accident.
Yeah, I heard something about a boat.
A boat, a boat, oh really? I was going to say, he's talking to somebody, but have you, did you hear anything? Yeah, I just heard somebody twisted their ankle down there on something over the weekend and we were doing it.
Okay, I'll just check with them later.
Yeah, we can see. Yeah, I'm curious if we have something like that. But, and just so you know, Roger's in there and Matt's in there on the Facilities Committee and the, the Task Force, the committee that's a sub of the Facilities Committee that's looking at the Honeysuckle Beach, they have some options that they're looking at, that they're flushing through, trying to get those in a final form. And then they're going to set that for a workshop in July sometime. It'll probably be mid-July for this workshop and be able to see some of these possible options to, to fix some of the issues. And I'll mention, you know, one of them is splitting out the boat launch area over to another area and having the beach and boat launch separate. Anyways, without seeing the diagrams and everything, it's hard to see. But just know that the group is working hard on that. And there's, I think, some very creative, good ideas that are coming out of it, so.
It's a great group because it's the states involved, the conserv, conservation-
Conservation easement folks.
Yeah. Nick from Cooney County, Parks and Waterways. I mean, there is such a fishing game. There's such a diverse group of people that is working on this. It's, it's one of the best groups I've ever worked with because there are so many neat ideas out there.
Yeah.
So.
There are. And the coolest one is, still looks like it might be viable. And so, you know, so Roger and Matt and the mayor have seen, seen them. So Nick and Jerry, at some point before it goes to the workshop, we want to roll those out for you so you can see them. Because we don't want you to get caught with people asking you questions.
That's the Facilities Committee?
Yeah. It's, no, it's a subcommittee of that. It's, it's the Honeysuckle, Honeysuckle Task Force Group. I-
I forget what we call it.
We have an official name for it, I forget. So that's, that's the boat launch. It's, we've got some money in there, which is good that we can do some projects to improve the boat launch area. The next one is the Veterans Memorial Fund. If you look at that, we have a fund balance carryover of $19,000 is what we're estimating. And we're estimating about $1,800 coming back in for the year. So having about $21,000. And then when you go to the next page on the expenditures, we put in approximately $3,000 for maintenance and other costs for that. So not a huge expenditure. It's a, it's a healthy, healthy amount of that.
Can you advance your slide?
Yeah, what page are you on, Brett?
Now I'm on three, three and four.
Okay.
So you have, so Veterans Memorial, the $19,000 is, we're predicting $1,800 to come in. And that's from sale of the pavers. That seems to be slowing down a little bit as far as sell of those pavers that we announce over here. So not a lot of action happening in this.
Brett, can people donate to that fund even if they don't want to break?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they want to donate and-
What would, what would the money be used for then? Just upkeep and?
Could be, we could use it for maintenance. It could be for like a special project that comes up that we apply.
Do we, do we ever do freebies for people that can't afford it?
I'm not aware that we've ever done one, but-
The Veterans Commission does, I believe.
Have they?
Veterans Commission does one for the Veteran of the Year.
Yeah, they have another, I remember when I clerked it, they had a program where-
Somebody could see a badge.
Yeah, they should bring it up, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if they've ever-
So that's, that's basically what's happening. There's some maintenance and pavers in there. So it'll still have a healthy number there to carry over the following year of about $16,000. Page five, this is the Media Center Fund. This money separated, Michael's still here. This is kind of, this is Michael's. He protects and watches over this. This was money given to the city from Gore Lane. I don't know, it's probably been eight, 10 years ago. And keeps it here. It was meant for updating technical equipment in council chambers. And so we have used some of that money. I think last year or the year before, we used it to purchase some, some here. These, these cameras and things were actually, we paid for out of CARES, CARES money. So we didn't have to use any money out of this.
But he used money for wiring and other incidentals that he had to do to get everything.
To get everything set. So, but that's what, that's for. So we just keep that as separate money to when we need some technical equipment.
See, another improvement, you know, I remember when we used to just get mine with hand-me-downs from other agencies and stuff. And now we got real stuff.
Well, and it's interesting, you know, the quality of the cameras is much better when you look at it. But the other thing that I didn't realize, what he wanted to do is, you know, we had them mounted on the ceiling. And when people were walking upstairs, they were still here late and we were having the meeting, they would joggle the cameras. And so he has them installed on the walls so to avoid the juggling. So anyways. So a little about, $12,539 is what we have in there. If you go to page six, that's the expenditure side of this fund. We just put on there in case there was something, Michael actually didn't have a specific project or anything, but we put some in there in case we had to redo something or replace something. We put $3,000 in there. Probably this next year, it's not likely we'll spend it. So we'll just have the fund balance carryover for the most part on that one. Law Enforcement Fund, this is actually the impact fee money that we're not, we're not collecting anymore because we didn't have a project. And so there's about $60,000 in there. And about every month, there's, we sign off on two or three refunds to go back to builders on this because statutorily, the time has run. And if we don't spend the money, it has to go back. And so I've talked with Bob Norris again and said, hey, if you guys have a project in, in the city, a capital project that we can do, we still have this money and it's going to trickle down. But over the next couple of years, if you have a project, let us, let us know. So anyways, I don't know. It's several every month. Some months I see five or six and some months-
Between $500,000 that we're refunding.
That we refund every month. So it's just, it's slowly trickling away.
From permits that were taken out 11 years ago that paid for.
So if we, this is one, you know, on the impact fee committee, if we end up and they have a project or we have a project or we, you know, get approval for, you know, a longer capital item that might be, I mean, police cars are not long enough. It needs to be like a 10-year type of thing that we might be able to spend it. We might be able to start collecting on the police impact fee again. It's worth a discussion since the Fire Department is working on theirs. So not a whole lot there. That's page eight. Again, we're just showing an estimate on what we're going to be refunding on those, on those fees. These others are, again, these are kind of the obscure funds, but we thought we'd just mention them in case you had, had questions. The Enhancement LID Fund, this is primarily, this is, this is-
Government way.
Government way project that people are paying on their LID. And we're primarily at this point, just paying on the bond principal and bond interest. There's a little bit of staff time to monitor or pay these things that comes out of this, but not a lot happening with this. It's just one of those obscure funds that we track separately. Payment in lieu improvements. This is the one, we get a report from Sandy. She tracks this. These are monies that were given, were required of developers when they came, come in. For example, a lot of it has to do with Hayden Avenue. So when somebody came in and they were putting something in, they were required to put in improvements. But instead of having them put improvements in early and having them out there in the middle of nowhere, they could pay a fee in lieu of. And then when we go to do Hayden Avenue, we would look at this and say, okay, there's $200,000 in here that we can put towards the project. So we just have to keep an eye on it and track it. There's not a lot of- There's not a lot of, um, projects that have happened out of here recently. So I think we just budgeted a small amount.
We paid ten thousand this year for Hayden Avenue, the section that was done between government way and the highway.
Yeah, somebody had paid something on that project and we were able, actually, that's the first time since I've been here, I think, we used any of those funds. Um, so it's in the three hundred and forty, forty-four thousand range, um, and we just keep it. It can, continues to accrue interest and, and we monitor that. So again, we estimated a similar, just an expenditure of about ten thousand. And, uh, that fund remained fairly close to where it's been at three fifty-five. Uh, this is just, again, just a small amount, not even a, really worth talking about. But we do have some money that, I assume it was a donation years ago, uh, for, uh, museum. So we keep this separate, we track it separate, there's about a thousand dollars.
Donation by Jerry House.
Jerry House.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
So we have a place that people want to donate for a museum at some point. We have the Historic Society. If we ever can figure out a place to, to put a museum, there's some funds in here. Not a lot, but there's some funds in here, so.
Buy the Owl Cafe, make a museum out of it.
That, that would be a good urban renewal project. They could, could buy it for, because it's not, I mean, the price right now on that building is, I think, six hundred plus thousand dollars.
Brett? They have a pending offer too.
I think, yeah.
Um, years ago, one time they were talking about using the barn at, um, Stoddard Park.
Yeah.
Is that a no-go?
It's still on the radar, it's still in part of the plan, but we just haven't, it's not been a priority as far as funding.
Okay.
I can, if you, if you had Susie in here, she'd tell you that's still a, a plan she wants to. I think it, it's a, it's a great, it's one of those small-town, little community things that we ought to do if we can come up with some money. Because if we can clean out the barn, you know, we talked about maybe having events in there, maybe a farmer's market. You could do some cool things in there and make it a, a neat thing. The guys have been trying to seal it off to keep the pigeons out of it, because that's the po- problem right now. The pigeons are just causing problems in there. They keep finding ways to get in there. So anyways, they have approval. I've, I've asked them, we're trying to, there's a, an eve that, that the pigeons can get in under. And so I've asked them to, to hire somebody to, to fix that part of the problem. But they've been putting stuff up around. But anyways, it's a, it's a great resource and it could be something. It's just, we're so busy, it's just been a lower priority. But yes, it's still kind of a vision thing that would be nice to, to do. All right, uh. Sewer Connection Assistance Fund, this is again, a, a separate one that, um, that periodically, if we receive a request from somebody that, um, would have a hard time connecting to sewer, I s- we could probably use it, you know, maybe for sewer bill or s- some, some sewer payment. If there's somebody that's in digit, required, requires some payment, we can dip into this. And we've done that once since I've been here. It was a couple of years ago, there was.
It's for connection.
Yeah, for connection.
For connection assistance, so it can be used for a bill. If someone is needing to hook to sewer and the cat fees are a hardship, we can offer this fund to help them.
And we had, we had one like that, that somebody, oh, it was, not without using a name, it was a.
We have it currently, so.
Was it like last year?
Yes.
Uh, it was a, someone that moved into a home and required to.
Yes, the subject failed and they needed to hook to sewer.
So that's a fund that's there that can be used to help someone because there's times when cer- certain circumstances, whether, maybe they buy a home or, um, didn't know that they're required under a code to, to connect to sewer, that this, this fund can, can help with that. There just, there hasn't been a lot of action lately. Have a lot to say with that. Waste water revenue bond, this is probably something we could even talk about with, these next two, the sewer asset replacement fund and the sewer revenue bond fund. I, I think we'll talk about that when, when we do sewer. So those, those two, we'll talk about sewer in the next meeting. I just wanted to kind of get those, they're not obscure, but they're like minor funds. Just kind of get those done and out. And, um, so that, for, for tonight, that's really all we wanted to do as far as the budgets, present those things. And then in the next budget, we want, our next meeting, we want to go through impact fees and sewer and then kind of look at the overall budget. And then if we can schedule August third, um, to have the final numbers for the budget. Normally, we wouldn't have this many meetings. But August third, we would approve the tentative budget and then notice it and then have our hearing. So that's kind of the remainder of the process that we, we foresee for the budget. Any questions? All right. I can appreciate Sandy and her work on this. And, um, this year has, has been just weird because of House Bill three eighty-nine and some other things where we're, normally there's stuff that we would normally have by now that we're not getting, you know, we're getting late from the state or not have, and they're critical for finishing the budget.
You know what's really cool about Sandy? I don't even remember the name of the lady she replaced. Isn't that terrible? That's terrible, but it's, you know, I mean, it was such a seamless transition, you know.
Well, just know, I, I, Sandy's done a great job and, uh, she's very detail-oriented, which is what I want in the financial area. She looks at numbers, she's really good at that, so. You've got a great hand there.
Brett?
Yes.
Um, uh, one thing I wanted to pass on was if you go to the National League of Cities website, um, they had some, um, ARPA guidance on using funds for water, uh, wastewater and.
Okay, good. We, uh, and, and I've got to get Sandy on there. We, we watched the ICMA, which is our, my professional organization, was on for like an hour and a half and went through ARPA in the funds and what it could be used for, and it was really pretty good. So then it's recorded, so. All right, that, that's all I had.
Thank you, guys. So we got to have a motion to adjourn, right? We got it? Okay, we're good.
Never get a second though, would you?
I had two motions, one, oh, we'll take that. Did you, there was a launching?
Was there an, an accident or anything at the Honeysuckle Beach, uh, the launch?
The launching with the boat?
This last weekend?
Yeah, so we had a, uh, individual who was very intoxicated that attempted to launch his boat, but launched his truck with it, so.
Oh, no.
Yes.
Every time you get there, it's truck.
But at least he didn't drive into the, like, everyone else needs to do it. It was a launching mistake where he left his truck in gear and it went into the water, so.
Oh, yes.
You know, to me, it, we've had a couple, and, and over the years, we've done some modifications to the ex- entrance to the Honeysuckle Beach because of people that have driven down in the water. I, I, I just don't understand how anybody could accidentally get there from here.
Right, well, a lot of it seems to be deliberate now, so.
I think so, I think you're right. Because it, you can't accidentally drive down there without running into something.
Growing up, as I grew up here, I remember when he could literally just stay on Honeysuckle.
Well, it was a free shot.
Yeah, it was. With everything that's down there now, it's prevented that.
Yeah, I agree.